To call this meeting to order. It's, as you have listed, it's a special meeting to address one topic tonight and it has been tough, I know, for some of the council members to arrange their schedule and I know it's been a lot of effort. Councilman Peterson worked hard and was able to make it and I believe Councilman Mayor Pro Tim Rixby hopefully will make it too, but since it's past six, we will go ahead and begin. If I could ask our clerk, city clerk, to ask for the roll call, please.
Councilman Ziprick.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Councilman Fapesku.
Present.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
And Mayor, Mayor Bretam Rixby, I think will be joining us shortly. We do have a quorum.
Are there any items to be added or deleted to our agenda?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. And as with any city council meeting, there is the opportunity for participation by the public with any items that you would like to bring to our attention. This is the part of the agenda. If the item is on our agenda, which is basically the one item tonight, please save that. If there's some other issue that you would like to bring to our attention, this is your opportunity and it is time for public comments. Seeing none, we will move on to the subject at hand. Tonight's meeting was called to look at the results of something that's been worked on for a long time. Then, I think, a key issue in this community is, we're all very aware of some of the transportation elements. We've had various consultants working on this and finally have some information and presentation to bring to us tonight. I would like to turn this meeting over to Ms. Waldorf in Community Development and ask her to take it from here and introduce some of the other individuals that will be helping out as consultants and making the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. We have been working on the traffic study for quite a while and you actually gave such a good introduction, I don't need to say too much. But we felt that it was an important enough issue that we should introduce it to the council before we embark on the environmental and the rest of the process to bring the revised general plan forward to you, just to keep you in the loop and let you know where we're at. We have Lloyd Zola with HDR Incorporated. He is our general plan consultant along with LSA. We have, sitting next to him, Anthony Petros, who is with LSA and is a traffic transportation engineer. And we have some other folks from LSA in the audience and Lynn Calvert-Hays, our environmental consultant, is here and Sandy Penn and Arash is, are here. Perhaps Tony would like to introduce them because they may be responding to any questions you have at some point.
Thank you, Deveron, and thank you and good night, or good evening, Mayor Brower, fellow council members. My name is Anthony Petros. I'm the principal with LSA Associates, the prime preparer of the traffic study that were, is the subject of the meeting tonight. As has been mentioned, Mr. Sandy Penn Bhattacharji and Amberish McCurgie are also in the audience who assisted in the preparation and may be called upon to field any questions that you do have. I'll open with a brief discussion of the major findings of our analysis and give you the 50,000-foot flyby of the methodology. We can then go into some of the other more detailed items that you may have before you on your minds and I'll be available to answer those questions. The primary finding of this traffic study, well, let me start with, the objective of this traffic study was to determine whether we could find and establish a circulation system at the buildout of the general plan land use element that would support that level of development at the levels of service described in Measure V, which is level of service C. The purpose of the analysis, as I said, was to come up and say, of the development that is included in the land use element, which does include projects such as the Orchard Park and University Village and all the other discrete projects that are contemplated in the buildout of the general plan, is there a roadway system that will carry that traffic at the prescribed level of service from Measure V? And the findings that we do come up with are that, in fact, at the buildout of the general plan, a circulation system can be proposed on those major facilities, the major highways, primary arterials, local arterials, and their intersections, such that level of service C can be sustained. The issues that we do have before us are that we've got the temporal notion, which I'll describe briefly, but I'm sure Lloyd will go into in much greater detail as it relates to the conformity issue, and the fact that by virtue of the way the methodology was formed and by virtue of the way that we have interpreted Measure V, the effects of growth in other communities will also usurp the capacity in Loma Linda and might trigger the need for the improvements that are part of your general plan. Basically, what we have done is to, and I've provided some handouts to you, that include the existing general plan circulation element, which is indicated as Figure 17. These are all excerpted from the traffic study itself. And wanted to provide that as a comparison to what we are recommending, which is shown as Figure 16, the recommended general plan buildout roadway circulation network. These maps will then, if approved and adopted, will become part of the general plan and will describe the arterial street system for the city of Loma Linda in order to maintain that standard level of service C. And what we find is that in many cases, by virtue of the reduction in land use intensity citywide, inclusive of the growth of, as I said, the projects such as the University Village and the Orchard Park, we can actually downgrade some of those facilities into the future and look at a circulation system that might be a little more modest and in keeping with the land use element that's being proposed. In addition, what you find is the set of intersection geometrics that we are also proposing. So, we have looked at the major arterials in the street, evaluated those, and also looked at the major intersections in the city. And I want to bring that particular issue to your attention. We have looked at the major intersections, major-to-major arterials, primary, local arterials. As we have interpreted, and I'll defer again to Lloyd when he brings this up, Measure V describes all intersections. We did not have the wherewithal to actually get down to some of the local residential stop-controlled intersections and that really wouldn't be consistent with the general plan analysis anyway. However, as discrete development applications are brought forward, they may become the subject of those analyses and that is something that is not necessarily included in this much broader programmatic evaluation. But with the implementation in a long-range horizon of this, these improvements, level of service C again can be maintained. The final document that I did want to bring to your attention is just a comparison table. This, again, is a demonstration that in many places, the circulation system can be developed or designed and developed more modestly than what was once thought of as part of the existing general plan and still be able to provide the mobility that the city is desirous of. That's kind of letting you know the butler did it, but if I can take you back through just basically some of how this was constructed, because it does speak to the findings. LSA worked with the city of Loma Linda staff very well and I want to acknowledge Jarp's contribution and participation in this overall process. It was a pleasure to work with him. In obtaining traffic data from the regional model, the model that has actually held, it's called the East Valley Transportation Model, it's held by the city of San Bernardino. And what we did was create a series of horizons to evaluate. The first is an existing setting, what's it like out there today? So, we can always look back and say, what's the system performing like today? Then, we wanted to acknowledge the fact that Loma Linda is, in some ways, an island surrounded by a much larger region that has much more significant trip generators than the city might have itself. And so, we did a scenario that looked at the growth in traffic in the region to the buildout, leaving Loma Linda in its existing condition. So, all of the traffic that would be generated outside that could, would use Redlands, Barton, Mountain View, Tippa Canoe, that was loaded onto the street system. That was decided, developed as our no project. We then did another model run where we took the land use element and added that into the mix and compared the two as to what is the level of impact associated with Loma Linda development versus regional development. And once we do add in all of the city's projects, what do we need to do to provide the mobility that the city desires? It is instructive to us to see that, as one would surmise, and I don't have a distinct number for you tonight, but that the contribution of traffic from the region intuitively and as borne out by this analysis, has a great effect on the mobility of those living and working and recreating in Loma Linda. When we added the Loma Linda traffic in, it was a slight incremental increase into the overall fabric of traffic flow in the region. The more significant issue that I would like to bring to your attention is what I have said, at the buildout, we can, we have designed a system to achieve the level of service C. There is a difference between this type of long-range analysis and, as we interpret the Measure V provisions that say that the level of service that is present at the time a development application is filed is the level of service standard to be maintained or C, or level of service C. The issue becomes this, we have loaded all of the traffic into the mix and then sought out the system to support that. However, as time goes on, what will happen is that existing condition, traffic will slowly, slowly deteriorate in the existing condition as contribution from regional traffic comes through and discrete projects are presented. A development application will be made. The current level of service might be E or D, possibly F, just based on circumstances outside the control of Loma Linda. It may be that that development application sees that and says, alright, fine, we'll proceed and we will go ahead and mitigate that impact and restore the level of service. It might be that that project doesn't trigger a change in the level of service as prescribed in V and therefore, that poor level of service is maintained for some time until it is tripped. When it does become tripped, then part of our plan can be implemented and then regional traffic will grow and grow and grow, capacity will be usurped, that same circumstance will arise, and then we'll have a situation where the impact will be tripped, more capacity will be added. It will look like the teeth of a saw. Traffic will get worse, it may get to a point that it's an E or an F and the city will have to accept that because there is no development application that would trigger the need for a mitigation, so you will live with that until such time as an improvement is made, traffic will rise, improvement made, traffic will rise, improvement made. That temporal issue is something that I think I want to lay over to Lloyd's discussion on the notion of conformity and the implementation of the plan. But I think we're here to tell you that we are satisfied that the study that is presented before you, currently under review by your professional staff, is done consistent with the regional requirements for traffic studies, the congestion management program. We believe we have done the evaluation in not only the spirit but the intent of the general plan and Measure V and we come to tell you that we have established a complete system that is in correlation with your land use element and achieves the level of service standard that's been set before us. Lloyd?
There were two tasks that we did in incorporating Measure V into the general plan in relation to traffic. One was literally to take the provisions of Measure V and incorporate them into the plan. That was really a physical change because the reality is when Measure V was adopted by the voters or approved by the voters, became effective December a year and a half ago, it became part of the general plan. So, those level of service standards in Measure V are part of the general plan and when that general plan amendment comes before this city council, you will not be asked to incorporate or take any action regarding Measure V and putting it in the general plan because legally it's already there. Now, the standards, as Tony talked about, from Measure V are based on what is the existing level of service when a project arrives at the city. So, basically, the standard is if existing level of service is A, B, or C, we maintain level of service C. If the existing standard is D, that project must maintain D. If the existing is E, that project must maintain E, and if it's F, no increase in volume-to-capacity ratio. And that is what it must mitigate to. Measure V also says very clearly that the intent is to maintain level of service C throughout the city. So, therefore, the other thing that we looked at, and there was a lot of discussion previously at previous workshops on the general plan regarding, how does this work with the California Environmental Quality Act, with general plan level of service standards? And the notion that a general plan looks not only at what is the level of service at the time a project is submitted, but also what is the cumulative effect? What do we want level of service to be when all of our general plan is built out? Because what we need to do under state laws, correlate all of our land use to all of our circulation. So, that was the reason that we had asked LSA to determine, can we achieve level of service C when we take all of the development shown on the Loma Linda land use map and all of the development in all the surrounding communities are going to throw traffic onto our streets? And the answer is yes, we can do that. But we then have to make sure that as we have projects come forward and we go through required sequel review, as we look at supporting the fee system that you have in place, being consistent with the county-wide Nexus program, that we are in fact achieving the levels of service that we have said through Measure V that we want. Because it would be, and one of the things that we have done in the general plan and we have demonstrated with the traffic study and those improvements, is even in areas on our major system where today we have level of service D, today we may have level of service E, or we may have level of service F, we can make improvements that will make traffic better 20 years from now than it is today. And that is what the general plan is proposing. So, that what the general plan is proposing is we not only look at individual projects as to their immediate impact, what is the existing plus what this project does, but that we would require projects to participate in those long-term improvements, basically supporting and following the fee program that you have in place, the Nexus program that the city is participating in, all using the Measure V standard of level of service C. And so, the other two handouts that you have, one is entitled "The Growth Management Element" and this is to show that in the growth management element in the general plan today, based on Measure V, Chapter 2A incorporates the level of service standards from Measure V and that is what you see. You will also notice in the growth management element that all the text is in italics and that will be one thing that will bring forward to the Planning Commission and to you so that when you have the entirety of the general plan, you will very easily be able to distinguish what was adopted by the voters in Measure V and you cannot change without another vote of the people and what are those portions of the general plan adopted by the city council that can, based on state law, be amended four times a year. The italics means this is Measure V, adopted by vote of the people. The second handout that you have is identify the transportation and circulation element. And here is where we take that step and say that our long-term traffic standard is level of service C and that's Policy A. So, that we are saying that that will be the basis for determining in a traffic study long-term mitigation, long-term impacts, and we will in all cases require that that be met. Now, you see the number one below that says, in those locations where maintaining level of service C is not feasible and Measure V permits a lower level of service, that we will implement all feasible mitigation measures. As Tony said, the traffic study has analyzed and provided mitigation for backbone circulation system. There is no way of analyzing on a general plan every local street, every intersection. And so, what will happen is as projects come through and implement the general plan and its provisions implementing Measure V as well as this level of service standard, you will see traffic analyses that will say, this is what we need to do to achieve measure of service C in all locations and in those situations, if any, on our local street system where we're at low level of service D now or E now, here is all the feasible mitigation I can propose that consistent with Measure V, we'll keep it at D, keep it at E, or in the case of somebody that is at F on a local street, not part of the system that Tony has analyzed, will not increase the level of service. So, what we are doing with the general plan circulation element is taking the Measure V standard and applying it to long-term growth, which means that it will be applied to not only the existing condition and the project at hand, but what does this mean for the project that comes next and next and next and all that regional traffic? So, that as a whole, the general plan will not only implement Measure V, but will also achieve that standard and provide improvements to make traffic better in places where it is possible to make traffic better where we have D or E or F right now. You will also see policies, and I know this has been widely discussed and debated, but we've identified this to council before, what do we do where we are providing fees such as in the Nexus study and your city fee program as mitigation? And the concept that I had presented before, and I will preface this by saying, we have also heard that special counsel does not agree with this, but purely from a general plan standpoint, what we are saying is where you are accepting fees, those fees will be accepted as essentially mitigation in full. If the public is, if the public entity is building an improvement, that that improvement is programmed. So, for example, with freeway interchange improvements, that would be part of what Sandbag is looking at, the fact that Sandbag or Caltrans or the city has an improvement in its capital improvement program, payment of a fee toward that improvement is mitigation and under the general plan would be accepted as you have met our level of service standard. Where a private entity is looking at building, so where you have a project that you now say, under the provisions of Measure V, you will build this improvement, you will put a traffic, a traffic signal in such and such intersection, you will add a right turn lane, you will add a left turn lane. Where you are requiring a private entity to put that in, what the general plan says is where we're going to require them to do it and it's not part of a public project, they will build it and start up construction is the evidence that it's going, that it's happening. So, as a summary, what would be qualified as mitigation is where it is part of a public improvement program, payment of fees towards that improvement is mitigation if that improvement is programmed. If a private entity is to build it, start of construction is the evidence that it will occur. You will hear, as we go through the public hearings, and that would be the place to actually debate this, but as we go through the public hearings, you will ask, as council, be asked to make a determination, not only what is appropriate for the general plan, but what does in fact Measure V say and require when it says, we will maintain level of service C? Because what will happen under Measure V, under the best of circumstances, is background traffic will increase traffic loads, you will then get a project, and the only way that you have to mitigate traffic within the city of Loma Linda is when you have a project to provide those improvements and then traffic improves, background traffic increases, you now have a Loma Linda project and it improves. And the one thing that we cannot do is determine, in what order does background traffic show up versus your projects within the city that you actually have control over? So, the summary I'll give over this is we have determined that maintaining level of service C on your backbone circulation system, the system that's in the general plan, is feasible even in cases where traffic is now worse than that. And we have provided the program to achieve level of service C on that system and a means of implementing California Environmental Quality Act, general plan standards, and Measure V, all in a single consistent package. And that will be, that is what will be coming forward to you with the general plan and into those hearings. Any of the issues that we may have heard in previous hearings that we don't think, or previous litigation, we don't think that you can actually achieve level of service C, or you can implement your housing element, the traffic will prevent us from doing that. The traffic study that we have tells us we can get there. So, with that, I'd be glad to take any questions that you might have.
With that introduction, I'd like to ask council for questions again tonight. The intent is obviously to receive this report, to ask questions, to clarify details. It's not to implement or do any other specific actions tonight. So, questions from council?
Just on the map, it shows University Avenue going through from Anderson Street to Campus and beyond to the west. Since that doesn't go through at this point, it's going to temporarily go through, but is that intended to just show a temporary street? Because it's in solid blue.
May I ask, we don't have this on a computer.
Oh, I guess we don't.
Showing.
So, I can see the, is TV on?
Is there, see, some of you have.
You see what I'm referring to?
Diagrams, but not everyone.
I'm going to ask Sandy to come up and join me in answering these questions.
My name is Sandeepan Bhattacharji. I am a senior transportation planner with LSA. The street network shown on this map is what will be ultimately built. Some roadways may not exist at this time or are temporary roadways, but in future are, will be required or be built.
So, we're anticipating that University will become a permanent road on this?
Not.
University doesn't exist right now west of University Court.
Right, it's supposed to be built, yes.
I'm sorry?
Ultimately, ultimately, it will be built.
Well, it's only on a temporary basis, though, right?
According to this analysis, that segment of road or a parallel facility of that kind is required to maintain a level of service standard.
You mean University would have to go through from Anderson to Campus?
That's correct.
And that.
That would actually cause a little firestorm.
Well, and one of the things to look at.
Just a minor point.
Yeah, if we go back to the existing general plan, the one that was adopted in, whatever it was, I forgot the date, in July of 2006, that's a long time ago, that connection of University.
University going west and eventually connecting onto Barton was included, is actually included in the adopted general plan as it exists.
We're talking about Evans, that's Evans or Camp West Road.
Yeah, the Evans alignment.
We're talking, yeah.
The Evans alignment going north-south and connecting all the way down is also shown. So if you take a look at Figure 17 that you have.
Yes.
That's the existing general plan.
That's the existing plan, the one that was adopted in 2006.
We're carrying that forward, and it is in fact applied.
I didn't think University, I didn't think University went through, though. Let's.
Well, this new one also doesn't mention that Stewart Street is going to be a four-lane.
Right.
It has Stewart Street as a two-lane, so that may, since that's going to four lanes, it may remove the requirement.
I wasn't trying to bog anything down, I just thought that, because it's actually an issue that might need some adjustment.
Good, thank you for bringing it forward. It is indicated on your existing general plan.
Mr. Breyer's going to have to get up and say something.
We tested your general plan and found that, in fact, it substantiated the need for that parallel facility, which you adopted in the prior general plan. Now, if you're suggesting now that that is something that should have been looked at as not being required, we'll go back absolutely and do it, but as indicated on Figure 17, that's what is in your existing general plan.
Somehow I didn't think that had been.
And we can, as part of this process, take that out.
Okay.
Admittedly, I thought I read the general plan all the way through, but I don't recall seeing University Avenue opened again in front of the library, between the library and the church. I can't imagine that ever happening. Where did that come from?
I'm not suggesting whether it's feasible or real or not.
I mean, how did that even get in the general plan?
I'm just saying that that is what's.
I mean, is it in there?
I think the answer is it won't be by the time you're done adopting.
Okay. Just a minor point.
We're in trouble.
We can all agree on that one. Did you have any other additional comments for us, or are you ready to entertain some more questions from council?
Any other questions?
Unfortunately, we don't have all the tables in front of us. There were a number of tables that was included with the traffic study, and because it was only in a disk, we don't have in front of us. So I'm kind of basing that on memory. And correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the tables I saw was for build-out in 2030, and a number of intersections in California were brought down to F. And I'm just wondering, if we're trying to maintain level of service C, how are we getting to F?
The, that's the progression of the study, and in fact, you are correct. What was done was we loaded all the traffic, both regional and in the city, on the existing system. If you did nothing else, and yet allowed all that development to occur and all that growth to occur, you would have F almost on virtually every facility in the city. From that point then, we said, "What needs to occur, what capital projects need to happen to not have F, but instead to restore level of service C?" And so we said, "Here's the existing system, now let's build up to provide the capacity to sustain that traffic." And that's what you see as the graphic that we pointed out of what needs to be built to not have F, but instead to maintain C.
Okay. And the other question I had was, you project in your model, how much traffic is being brought into the, into our circulation element from the outside area? How did you determine how much traffic that is? What is the criteria used?
That's a very good question, and that is actually under the auspices of the regional body Sandbag, and in fact, the larger body SCAG, the regional agency. There are estimates of everybody's development potential. Everybody says, "This is what I want," and then it goes through the sieve of, "Is that real?" And then, based on current modeling practice, there are mathematical equations called gravity model equations that say, if the general trip length in this region is four to eight miles, and if there's so many homes here, and so much employment here, and recreation and other opportunities, and the paths are such, that traffic is going to use those paths. It's a state-of-the-art, conventional, tested method of traffic forecasting that, in fact, all of these models have to go through consistency findings with Sandbag and ultimately with SCAG to make sure that it's done correctly.
Is there a number attributed to that? In other words, you know, that brings in 20% more traffic, 30% more traffic?
We could, when it comes time for the hearings, we could try and delve back into the model and get you something that would say, "What's the contribution from the outside versus Loma Linda?" Unfortunately, it's not our model. It's, it actually is in the hands of the city of San Bernardino, so we will find an answer for you. We'll have to go back and ask that question.
There was a number of improvements that you, there's a table we have that basically goes over the existing and then the change. Existing general plan and then the amended general plan?
Correct.
Okay. Those are the things that you recommended that we do?
Correct.
Okay. Did that also include the things that are anticipated, such as fixing Anderson and Fairlands Boulevard and the whole interchange?
The interchange improvements, because they have been programmed, some funded, and are actually in design, they are considered as to be already in place by the time the general plan occurs. This is to say, what out there is not funded, cannot really be committed, and therefore needs to be implemented as part of the general plan.
Do you happen to know if that also included changes to Mountain View? Because there are plans in the works to try to make significant changes to the Mountain View off-ramps.
I believe they are. Sandy, could you clarify?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the Mountain View improvements, the Tippecanoe interchange, the interchange at Evans, those are all regional improvements that have already been considered.
Obviously, a huge traffic generator in the city is the institutions, particularly the university and the medical center, the medical center probably. How was potential increased development of the medical center and the university put into the traffic model?
I will, I'll speak to that on a global basis. For the details, I'll turn it over to Sandy. I will say that we spent a great deal of time working with staff and the center in obtaining their best estimates of what their growth projections are. We can only go on what they're telling us are out there, but based on those estimates, there were trip generation characteristics that were attributed to them, and that was then distributed out on the street system.
Yeah.
The prior characterization, Sandy?
Yes, we worked with Ken and Jarrod and Deborah, and Ken provided us with the anticipated enrollment or the number of staff that they expect to have over the next 30 years. And so the traffic model, I'll go a little bit into more detail, works off four components. The number of single-family dwelling units, the number of multifamily dwelling units, retail employment and non-retail employment. So to account for the university, it was fairly easy, because we got the non-retail employment. We gave that number to the city of San Bernardino, and they incorporated that in their model in the specific traffic analysis zones on which the university falls, and increased the employment numbers, and that's how we accounted for the traffic.
Now, while it calls it employment numbers, by virtue of the way that these models work, it, that takes into account all activity. It's just lumped under the normative employment, but it does take into account student activity, administrative functions, the hospital itself, it's characterized as employment.
Right, so what the city did was we gave them, okay, this is the total number of employees that the university is going to have in, say, 2030. It said, okay, so typically, at, for universities, or for health universities, we have patients coming in, we have students coming in. So per employee, there are statistical standards that, okay, per employee, you are going to generate X trips, and they're going to come from, again, using the gravity model from all those areas, and that's how the model gives up the numbers.
Thank you, Sandy.
Did you get the same information from the Veterans Hospital and administration for their facility?
No, we didn't. Yes, we did.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we get them all. We work with the VA, we work with the university, we work with the developers in town, we get our artist number, I gave it to you.
It's a pretty tough prognostication for some of that, but again, you have to follow, I guess, what the best information's available. Further questions from council?
Traffic on the freeways now is, in some times of the day, is pretty bad and jammed up, and some improvements are being made. Did the traffic model, which was originated when they were built, not work? Or could we not anticipate what sort of development, or was it too long ago? So if these traffic models in fact do work, then why do we have a jam up?
Well, I can tell you that the models are the best predictor of traffic that we do have at present. I can also tell you that since I've been in this practice almost 30 years, if anybody ever told you that the area-wide freeways would be working fine, they were selling you snake oil. All of the forecasting tools today and in the past have been, and Caltrans will recognize this, have said that their concept levels of service, they would like to have between C and D, but they acknowledge will be E and F.
I would guess, from reading through the whole report, which I did, that getting to a level C or at build-out depends on development taking place. If there is no, let's just say that at this moment, if nothing more was built, then strictly from outside traffic and whatever happened, we're going to go downhill from here on, it's going to be a downhill slide. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct, and that was an undercurrent of the study that we were trying to save.
And all of that traffic is going to be generated from the surrounding area, because we're adding nothing new in town.
Correct.
So the traffic goes down, I mean, the traffic, the service goes down, nothing happens in town, and all of that traffic that causes the levels to get worse and worse and worse is generated by people who pay no taxes in this town at all. So we, well, we get some Measure I money and some other stuff, but basically, that's the case. Traffic is being generated from outside. So, the result is that, in order for us to maintain what we would consider, under Measure V, a reasonable level of service, that depends on development, doesn't it, happening?
That's correct.
But is, I'm sorry, but is that assuming that we're just going to not do anything to our roads at all? We're just going to sit and not build a single signal? We're not going to try to widen anything on our own?
The sources of funds that you have available to you are the Measure I funds. There are other competitive state and federal funds as well, but you are competing for those all around you, and quite frankly, the matches on those are going up and up and up from the city side. So for every dollar you think you may get, you may get 55 cents. I would suggest to you that the funding sources, other than those that come from SEQA and mitigation, and the Nexus fees, which are development-related, are not enough to get you to implement this general plan. In order to have this occur and maintain that level of service, yes, you must have projects to then have them either fund through fee or through the actual capital improvement, implement these projects. That's a true statement.
That's the part where I'm a little bit confused. You talk about Nexus funds, those are the, Nexus fees are the ones that attach to a project, and they're the local identifiable traffic impact mitigation, right? That's what Nexus fees are, because there's a nexus to the creation of the new project. And then you talk about development impact fees. Are those the ones that you're proposing that will achieve the level of service C distant from the projects? And how high would those fees have to be? And are there limits on those because of the requirements that things have a nexus to the project?
Jarrod, I can help on this one. Sandbag, as part of the updated Measure I, created two fee, okay? One is the Nexus study fee for the regional transportation, and one is the local transportation. So therefore, whoever wants to build a project in the city of Loma Linda, in the city of Bradlands, in the city of San Bernardino, required to pay two fee. One for the regional, which is going for freeway, the interchange, and one for a local street. So there's two different fees.
And that local one would be the one to achieve a fix of a level of service D on the other side of town from a project?
Correct.
Just a follow-up on that. Traffic people always use the word feasible, and I'm sure it has a definition. Is feasible purely a, an engineer with enough money can do it, therefore it's feasible? Or is there an affordability component to that term?
I'll take a shot at it, Jarrod, if you want to chime in. When we apply the term feasible in the context of this analysis, it is, is there adequate right-of-way? Does the project present itself as constructible? And we do not, at this point, really look at orders of magnitude of cost. However, for example, if we were looking at a street like Tippecanoe or Anderson, and it were such that we, the traffic demand would warrant 12 lanes, we would call that infeasible. That's just something that you could not, would not want to construct. There is also in that some level of desirability. There were some of the recommendations that we made on a few of your arterial streets that we thought are feasible, you could in fact build these, but because of community issues, landscape medians, the presence of more community-oriented character, we were directed to look for alternatives and take those out. So there was some desirability as well thought into those. Jarrod, did you?
Yes, I, yes, we went over the proposed project with the consultant, and we look into, for example, we have a proposed street, Mountain View from Mission to the I-10 freeway, proposed to be a six-lane undivided roadway. Yes, because it's feasible, yes, but we need money to find a right-of-way adjacent to the existing right-of-way right now.
And so what we found was there was an alternative. It appears that the demand is really actually higher in the eastbound direction, where it looks like there is, in fact, some right-of-way available. So we can do what's called an augmentation, provide that single eastbound lane, not affect the other side of the street, maintaining the desirable features of the current facility, and still get to the C level.
What I'm concerned about is that it costs money to do these improvements, a lot of money. And the majority of that money for these improvements typically in a city. And the majority of that money for these improvements typically in a city come from development fees. And with the restrictions that we placed on the way mitigation needs to take place and when, we may be creating unexpectedly, unintendedly, a situation where, first of all, we could bias ourselves against small development. Because a small development is simply not going to be able to pay for a mitigation to change several intersections from a level which they may cause to go to a D to a level C. They just can't do it. I mean, it's just impossible. And so we may be biasing ourselves toward huge projects and not small ones. Now you say, well, a small one will sit around and wait until the level tips over, and then they'll quickly try to get in at that point before it changes to the next bad level. And I suppose, and you did mention that in the report, that this may prolong projects. I, I'm concerned that somehow this will price, that we may inadvertently price ourselves out of the market. That we will require so much mitigation that simply people will go to San Bernardino, or they'll go to Redlands, or they'll go to Colton, or they'll go someplace else. It just, and then our traffic level will continue to decrease because of outside traffic, but we'll never have any funds to pay for it because of no development taking place. Is that, is that a possibility? Is that crazy, or?
I think from, from a technical standpoint, and I'd like to hear Lloyd's take on it from a policy standpoint, we tried to address that in the study, starting on page 82, where we acknowledged that, that you may either get a situation where you have a smaller set of projects that go after that capacity grab, hey, there's, there's a little bit in the system, I can get in and do it. Or you may have a situation where you're at that level of service E or F, nobody wants to move because they don't want to be the one to tip the scale. And in fact, you know, you might have a situation like that. Do you have anything you want to add, Lloyd?
I think in the case that you're talking about, a couple of things will come into play. I think Councilman Rigsby had asked the question about, does financial feasibility come into play? And I think this would be the place that as you're implementing that general plan policy, the one that you expressed concern with, that says all feasible improvements, where you're requiring, under the general plan, a very small project to make a very large improvement, you could argue that is not feasible. And that's where you kind of go beyond state requirements of proportional, you know, proportional mitigation and so on. So under the general plan and those general plan policies, I think the issue that you're talking about, financial feasibility on those small infill projects would come into play. And now a big however. Because in that case, where financial feasibility for the small project would come into play, the default would be Measure V and its standards. And under Measure V, feasibility does not come into play, except in a limited circumstance. I mean, there it says, it deals with if the, if the improvement is not feasible, we wait until it is. And that's, so what we can do is deal with that financial feasibility under the general plan, but then we default back to what does Measure V permit or not permit? And that, that one we cannot in the general plan change.
I'm, I'm somewhat struck by the more feasible plan that you've put forward compared to the one that's in our existing general plan. The existing general plan has six-lane freeways everywhere. And the proposal going forward is just that north of Mission on Mountain View and a little bit on Redlands, and then west of University on Barton. What changed? Why is it so easy to accomplish it now when it wasn't before?
Simply put, the land use element that is now considered in the proposed general plan has significant reductions in intensity citywide, such that the contribution of traffic from the city is enough to diminish the sections of roadway.
Do you have a number associated to that?
It's facility by facility. There's a comparison of the old general plan volumes to the new general plan. I can look through the document, but there are tables that have those volumes by facility in the document.
And we don't have, I think, if you're also. If you're looking for the numbers in terms of comparison of the build-out of the general plan that's now being, I shouldn't say is now proposed, as it exists today, as compared to as it existed in 2006, we do have those numbers and we can get them for you. And we'll, we'll go ahead and present them as part of the public hearing.
And it already is in the appendix. For example, appendix D is the future year volume. So, and.
I understand that. But that volume is based on number of units. I'm just wondering by how much do the units decrease in order to decrease the volume?
And we'll, we'll get those numbers and provide them to you. We have them.
If I could just follow up on the last point of Mayor Pertim Rigsby, I was struck also by the same thing with some of the arterials being less, how some of the final impact fees will play out. I don't think any of us can totally envision, but I could see a scenario that there may actually potentially be less cost to develop because we don't have to build these massive infrastructure with the three lanes in some of these areas. So there's going to be some, some things that, you know, there is going to require less intensive infrastructure based on this revised plan. So I can see some pluses and negatives as far as the total cost to various projects that may come in. Any other questions from council? Again, as I see it tonight, this is to provide an overall view of this study, to clarify questions, not to proceed with any specific policy decisions and so forth tonight.
Does your model take into consideration in any fashion a change in cost of energy?
Given these times, that's an excellent question. Unfortunately, no. What we are stuck with is forecasting the future based on the best available data at the time the model was built, which included all the econometrics at that time. And it did not presume $5 a gallon.
So are you, do you feel reasonably confident that you can predict changing in driving habits? What I'm concerned, one of my biggest concerns has been for a long time, is the incredible impact we have on our traffic in our town from other communities passing through. And I know that over the past three years, I live in Loma Linda, and I work here, so I don't leave this town, except on very rare occasions. I know that my driving habits within this town have changed completely from what they were three years ago. I don't drive on the same streets I did three years ago to get here to City Hall. I take streets that I didn't drive on three years ago. Are you, and, and see, here's, here's what I'm afraid of, is that we do everything we can in this town to decrease traffic generated internally, but we have no control of what happens outside. So what happens is, we decrease the traffic impact within the city by limiting development, which in most towns would be a great idea. But because we live where we do and what we have here, as soon as we don't build a house in Loma Linda and that traffic isn't on the street, then there's five other people living outside of Loma Linda who see that vacant spot on the street, and they're here instead of on the freeway, using our streets to get where they want to go, not doing anything here, but just passing through. You understand what I'm saying? And so, and, and people are changing their driving habits now, and I don't have any control over that. And so I predict, I'm going to prophesy out here, I'm not a, I'm not a traffic person, but I'm going to prophesy that no matter what we do, whether we build nothing, whether we build skyscrapers everywhere, whatever we do, within 30 years, we're going to be at a level F. We're going to be jammed up no matter what happens unless gasoline becomes eight or 10 or $12 a gallon.
Let me answer your original question about driving habits. In fact, the, the way that the traffic models are run, it does take into account the, the change in driving habit that you've described. And I'll give you a very brief modeling primer. There's two terms we use, demand and volume. Demand is, where do people want to go? And what would they really like to use to get there? And then there's volume. What are the constraints placed on that demand that would such change that driving habit and change the ultimate expression of traffic on a road? Models run like this. Traffic is incrementally loaded onto the street system. Speeds are calculated based on that traffic. All the traffic's taken off. It's run again based on that traffic, or I'm sorry, on that speed. All the traffic's loaded again at that new speed. Now, what the demand that for one facility is affected because the speeds have been reduced, that demand will find another route. And the volume changes based on the prevailing speed. It's rerun again, and the speeds are affected, until it gets to an equilibrium position where the total demand is satisfied wherever it goes, and that's what's called volume. So what we'll see is that, hey, folks may want to take, you know, one primary facility, but it's expressed as traffic on a number of facilities. Folks may want to be on the 10, but because the 10 is jammed up, they're on Redlands. That's, we do take into account that particular behavior.
Kind of to follow up on Mr. Peterson's concern about the cost of gasoline, I noticed on page 82 of your, of your analysis, and I'm going to read directly from it, "A comparison based on the 2006 American Community Survey, 1.46% of the residents of San Bernardino County use public transit for work-related commute. Even if a light rail connection was constructed, the benefits of reduced congestion on the city of Loma Linda's circulation network will be minimal." Now, obviously, that survey was done in 2006. If we fast forward to 2008, where gas prices are a little higher, I'd be curious to find out whether that number increases and whether those, whether people would be more inclined to use public transportation system. Later in your analysis, you talk about the fact that there is plans with Sandbag to put in a railroad station over at California, and that they're recommending that we do more to encourage a stronger feeder-bus system that will be helpful with that. And I think that's something that we should keep in mind.
Thank you. Does, I, I know that the university medical center is planning some parking structures, parking places and structures and so on. Does the model take into consideration the location of those?
Yes.
It is? Okay. As a proposed location.
And in fact, as I mentioned before, we have, under a separate task, the work effort to look at discrete projects, now that they've already been loaded into the general plan, what are their individual effects? I mentioned University Village Orchard Park, we're looking at the effects of parking structures at the university as well.
I don't have it in front of me, but I remember reading the traffic analysis of the existing general plan. And it talked about, at build-out, what percentage of traffic is caused by whom? And from my memory, I remember institutional growth accounted for less than 30%, but I'm just wondering whether you have any of those numbers in front of you?
Unfortunately, I don't, but I, I tell you, we will have.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
We don't want to prolong this meeting tonight, but as this is intended to be a workshop, I would be open for some brief questions from the audience. Again, that's not a public hearing or any such thing, but if there's brief questions about methodology, don't want to get into any other issues tonight, but if there's issues with methodology or other things that are unclear, question-type format, I think perfectly appropriate, and just encourage it to be brief, and we'll try and finish this up before too late. Anyone from the audience that would have questions related to the presentation so far?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. It looks like we've got a good news report from the traffic consultant. It looks like if you read the summary of the charts, that today we only have two bad intersections that are at level D. I think that's a bit of a surprise to everybody, including myself, considering what has gone on in this community for the last few years. That's good news. The other, there's a couple of other pieces of good news, and one is, is that you can actually get to a level of service C at build-out. That's a big question that I've had in my mind, and I know others have had in their mind, and I think that's a, a really encouraging and beneficial piece of information that's been borne out from this study. I'm glad that that was a key element of the study. The other bit of good news, I don't know if people are interpreting it the way I am, maybe I'm just slightly biased, is that without development, instead of having, these are two bad intersections in the morning, I'm sorry, and, and this is directly in the city of Loma Linda, this, this chart of summary has intersections outside of our city jurisdiction. But within the city of Loma Linda in the morning, there's only two bad intersections at level D. And then the afternoon, there's 10, four Fs, three Es, and two Ds. And the majority of those intersections, everybody knows about, are the northbound Anderson, Redlands Boulevard, where all that traffic is. Without any development, we go from two bad intersections in the morning to nine bad intersections, seven of them are F and two of them are D. And in the afternoon, we go to 20, 15 are F, one is E, and four are Ds. Now, my numbers may be off one or two, but, which leads to a question, considering that we can get to a level of service C, in my printing out of this report, it was a little hard to see the exhibit, and I don't, no, we don't have an exhibit here on the screen today, but is it possible to just go over the highlights of future build-out with development and the master plan facilities that you've recommended? Just kind of hit what those main ones are? I know there were comments said they were significant than what it was looked at before, that, that's kind of a neat thing, but just hit some of the highlights of what it would actually take from some of the key intersections for us to actually achieve a level of service C, because obviously it's not 12 lanes everywhere. But if you could tell the public that, this would be one piece that I think could be pretty helpful to some of the highlights.
If you think you can highlight that in a very short fashion, fine. Otherwise, if you think it's more appropriate to bring that back when we have further sessions, I'll leave that up to our consultants. But certainly, we talked about Anderson, Tippecanoe, and the freeway, and that's certainly one of the key elements. Do you care to highlight a couple of the other major elements?
I'm sorry, some pages, 61 and 62.
There are, well, actually, it's beyond that. That's to get to D.
Oh, 68, I'm sorry.
Yeah. There, there are at least 10 pages of incredible detail of this lane needs to be added, on this approach and that, on that. I think it would be a better use of time if we brought up a graphic during the public hearing, a very important concept that the public does need to be aware of, and we, I got the comment.
Very good. We will bring that back at the appropriate time. Mr. Stewart?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, my name's Michael Stewart. Couple of things, I hope we have more workshops on this. This has a lot of things that need to be looked at throughout this, this. This has a lot of things that need to be looked at throughout this process, and we need more workshops and several public hearings. But my big question has to do, and I heard about it, use it as a sawtooth effect, where the level of service will keep deteriorating, and then finally, something triggers, some poor guy puts a garage edition on, and suddenly, it's went from Level D to Level F, because it'd been slowly ratcheting to that point. And my concern is that we have these trigger points of A, B, C, D, E, F, where it's, there's points in between, where if at Level C, I've got 50 points, and Level D comes on at 70 points, somebody can put in 19 points' worth of development, and nothing happens until the one last point, and then some, so whoever gets in first gets to do his, do anything without having to be affected by it. And I'd like to see at least the raw numbers on if we've got a Level C, if that's very close to a D, or if it's just past a C. And I think in this report, it would help to have those actual numbers of the, how the level was achieved. Thank you.
Need to have signs like the airports, orange and red and blue.
I have a question. Okay. If there were 20 different projects that together deteriorated an intersection from a C to a D, the 20th project, would that not just contribute its fees into the pool, and then all the 20 projects' fees would be used to mitigate at that point?
Yes, and I think that the issue that was just raised is exactly what was solved in the general plan, by proposing that we analyze projects, not just existing plus the one project, but that we look at, if you have the one project, and we know there's 19 coming, we're looking at all 20 as a whole, you provide your share of the whole solution. Whereas, an existing-plus-project approach says, we got a project, I don't have an impact, okay, I go free. The next guy, I don't have an impact, I go free. And you hit the one guy. What the general plan will do, and what city system will do, is say, everybody coming through the city, each handles their proportionate share of the long-term solution. So, the issue that was just raised is what the general plan will actually solve.
So, then that means that the impact fees have to be analyzed now to put enough money aside, since you're going to average it out?
Yeah, what we would have, and this also a question for Jarv, but now we have a, an accurate set of improvements on that backbone system to analyze against a fixed amount of development, to make sure your fees actually achieve this system.
You are correct.
So, one interpretation is that this will be a better long-range planning tool for infrastructure and development than we've had previously, and again, I promised or asked not too many comments, and here I'm violating my own rules, sorry. Any other questions, clarifications from the public? Yes, please. I wanted to welcome some of our new planning commissioners that are here tonight, and great to see you here.
Hi, Lori Ubersack, one of the new planning commissioners. Question, if we had no further development, and we're saying that we would have to accept that just coming through our town, traffic from the other towns, is going to make our intersections worse, is there anything feasible, practical, or legal we can do that can make our roadways unattractive? I mean, for example, I mean, the speed traps, toll, I mean, you know, things that would make people not want to go through our town, speed bumps, moat, yes, that would force people to shunt their traffic route. Let's say you live in Colton, work in Redlands, and you take Barton. That would shunt people more to Redlands Boulevard or the 10. I mean, is there anything that's been proven effective in doing something like that and keeping them off of Barton?
The answer is yes. The question is, would you really want to?
Well, that's the thing, you don't want to make it miserable for the town.
You could put speed bumps, we could make Barton absolutely miserable to drive on, but the problem is, whatever we do to make it miserable, is not going to distinguish between a Redlands resident coming back from work in Ontario and a Loma Linda resident heading home. That's really the problem. The things that would make a street unattractive to drive will make it unattractive to drive for everybody driving it.
That's what I was wondering, it is nothing, it's everything.
It's the same argument that you hear with a lot of traffic calming issues, is residents want, you've got to do something, slow down the traffic on our local street, we put in speed humps, speed bumps, do a lot of things. Traffic is for sure slower, and then you get the very same residents coming in, what'd you just do to my street? I don't like driving it anymore.
But, for example, I don't know, do you know what the percentage of people is that lives in the town that works at the university? Any idea?
The last count that we got, that I got a couple of years ago, was, I think about, of the 6,000 or 8,000 people working there, I think there was a couple thousand live in town, two or 3,000. And I think it's even worse at the Vets Hospital.
Okay. No, I was thinking that, you know, if you're only going one mile across town, then a miserable fix isn't necessarily that miserable, if it keeps everybody else out of the town.
But we're a service-oriented city. Our whole business depends on making our place attractive for people to come here. If you had, like, Victoria Gardens with speed bumps, and everything you could do to keep people away, they'd succeed in going bankrupt.
That's true.
That's just a thought.
No, I'm just, I mean, speed bumps per se, but I'm just saying, is there anything that would, approaching it from a different angle?
Yeah, the answer is physically, you could accomplish it, but the pain gets spread equally, and that's a case where essentially, the problem becomes, or the fix is worse than the problem.
In fact, that's what we have now. If we don't do any improvements, we are essentially making the street town attractive to drive on for everyone. I mean, that's where we are. Just don't put any more lanes in, and more turn signals.
I guess I should point out that I don't think anybody's actually suggested that we don't do any development. I think we are going to do development, and we are going to get fees, and we are going to make mitigations, and we are going to do things.
Thank you.
Any further questions from audience? Ms. Brer?
Cam Brer, Loma Linda University. I just thought I should respond a little bit to Councilman Ziprick's concern on University Street. In the master planning that I've been involved in at the university, it's always been our objective to move traffic to the perimeter of the campus. Closure of University Street was a key objective. Widening of Stewart Street is an equally key objective. Where Evans Street is shown on this plan was a plan, but I think even to the point of the eminent domain issues that came up with that alignment, that we see it moving further to the west. And we'd like to see all those things kind of calculated into this plan, so that we accommodate them. I'd hate to get something in the plan that Stewart Street, for instance, doesn't show here. We feel that's a key part of the circulation plan, so.
Was that added into it, anticipation of the Stewart Street widening? Do you know?
Yes.
All of these comments are very, very good for us to hear, and when we come back with, and again, as I opened my remarks, this document is still being reviewed by city staff, we really appreciate the clarifications. Yeah, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject too, I think something that, something that Tony said is key, and that's that staff continues to review these documents. Jarv and I both reviewed the map, somehow we missed the University Street going through, and so, we were remiss in not letting our consultant know. So, that's, that's my problem, and Jarv's.
Well, again, highlights the purpose of tonight's meeting, it's to get a first report, to highlight some of the findings, to look at some of the issues that might have been missed or incorrect, and then we will incorporate that as we move forward. Mr. Stewart?
Good day, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. To a point, and then maybe you can, at some point in closing, maybe explain to us, to the audience, how we think this process goes. This workshop's very helpful, whether it's one, two, the general plan had, you know, 20, 30 public hearings. So, we understand how we fit into this process, and part of the, my point would be, I see some things on the exhibits, I have some specific questions that pertain to properties I have, I think the university has some, and I don't know if there's an opportunity, perhaps the staff, the consultants could be made available in a workshop environment for members of the community, that we specifically could come in on a specific morning or afternoon and say, here's what we see. Because we all hear, see, different things, have observations, whether it's a typo, a misunderstanding on our part, or how we queue into this, it would be very helpful, and we might save a lot of time for the city and the staff in the long run than us coming back throwing darts at public hearings, because we think the wrong color is on the exhibit, and maybe it's our printer doing it, and it's not your report. Because California shows us a two-lane road on here, and that would surprise me, for example, or the alignment of alternative routes to the university. So, maybe there's ways those could be done on a super-technical level in a draft form, so they're not binding, but maybe we could get staff. I know in earlier version, there was one, I think there was an acreage wrong on a piece of property. Well, that could trickle through numbers and statistics all the way through this. So, that might be a methodology for staff to speed up the process a little bit, and we're certainly interested in trying to get conclusion as members of the community, so we can move on into the environmental. So, we'd like to hear kind of how this dovetails in adoption into the other environmental documents. Thank you.
Yeah, I think those are excellent questions, and would like to hear from staff and consultants, what would be the most efficient way to handle further input and clarifications, whether a other workshop environment, or a more just informal meeting that's notarized and everyone aware of, and look to staff and consultants, since you've obviously done this with other cities, and know what works, and I'd like to hear your recommendations.
I think that it would be helpful to have the comments and concerns that people might have put into writing, and I'm not asking that it be particularly complicated, just kind of circle the areas on the map and explain what the concern is, and then when we know kind of what we have in terms of either things that we overlooked, or things that maybe we should change, maybe it makes more sense, then I think we could probably get those together and perhaps have another workshop, or maybe an informal community meeting, where, you know, almost like an open house, where people could come in and sit down with us. And I'll ask our consultants, what they think about that idea?
I would welcome that. We are your consultants, but you clearly know your community and live here, so any input will just make this document a better document.
Yes, and I would like to add that I don't want to keep going back to rerun the traffic analysis, the model. I want to make sure that we get all the comments and run the models, because it costs money.
Yeah, so it would be helpful if, right now, it's, we're still kind of informally moving towards the environmental document, and we're still kind of determining what the appropriate document will be. But the traffic study has been made public, and it is open, it's not a formal public review period, but it is open for public comment. And so, I really would appreciate getting comments, and then all the people that have concerns will put those comments together, and maybe have an open workshop and invite them, and put something in the newspaper too, to make it, make the public aware that we are having an open house on the traffic study. And we'll determine at that time whether it would be best to have it during the day or in an evening.
I like that idea, and I think to have maybe even less formal setting than this, to go over some of those issues makes good sense. So, if the council concurs, we will work with staff to set up something like that and get all the input, because that is extremely valuable. We want this to be right and get the appropriate input.
And these documents that we handed out tonight, unfortunately, we didn't have enough copies for everyone, but I'll check with the city clerk, and I believe that we can PDF them and put them on our website in one location, so that they would be available to people to download, and if people need copies, we'll make them available. But I want the website to, for those people that have access to the internet, to make it easy for them to go and view the information, and then maybe contact us. We do have CDs of the traffic study, we also have a few CDs that have all of the appendix. We didn't print it out, it's well over 2,000 pages, so if you bring your forklift, well, we can give you a CD, and you can take it to Kinko's, or we can take time and print it, but it would take a while to print that much. We will do our level best to advertise and let people know that we have, that we're accepting comments on the traffic study, so that we can hit more than just a few people. We, it's like Mr. Stewart said, we'd prefer to get that now, instead of when we get to public hearing and then have to backtrack.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate all the input from staff, consultants, council, public. I would like to move toward concluding this meeting. Any final questions or comments from council? If not, we will then ask if there's any reports from council on any other items that doesn't relate, does not relate directly to this traffic study?
Just, council, I don't know if you saw the notice from Southern California Edison about the Deep Creek trip? If you haven't, I don't know, did you all get notices of that?
Wasn't that, was that this week or next week?
It's next week.
Next week?
If any of you ever get a chance to go on that trip, do it. It is an incredible experience. I've gone out, in fact, this is the first time that I've seen the trip put on again for at least probably 12 years. I didn't know they were doing it anymore. And it's an incredible experience. Definitely worth taking. It's going to take you three or four days to do it, but it's, it was, it was a really a great experience, wonderful.
Any other reports of council members? If not, the only other comment I would like to add, I just want to formally thank the fire department for handling our recent brush fire in the hills with superb ability to prevent any escalation and damage from that, and much appreciated. And just want to publicly acknowledge your fine work.
I think also, we should say to the fire department and to the family of the, pede condolences to the family and fire department too.
Absolutely. Any reports of officers? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.